Good evening. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, February 20th, meeting of the Monmouth City Council and ask Phyllis Bowman for our roll call, please.
Counselor Belz?
Here.
Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Lopez is excused. Counselor McKeel?
Here.
Counselor Oberst? Counselor Salinas Oliveros?
Here.
Mayor Coons?
I am here. And Counselor Salinas Oliveros, would you lead us in the flag salute this evening? Thank you. That brings us to our consent calendar. We have one item here, which is our last February meeting on February 6th. Were there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Belz, for the motion, and Counselor Salinas Oliveros for the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And that takes us to public comments. This time is reserved for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. We ask that speakers limit themselves to three minutes per item. And we do have someone this evening here with us. And so if you want to come on up to the table, and Sabre will help you, show you how to run that mic. Introduce yourself and where you reside.
Is it on there? My name is Sarah Altland, and I live on Cherry Lane South, which is just off of Clay Street. I am an avid walker, and I walk daily along Clay Street to volunteer at the library, utilize the post office, and everything else that downtown Monmouth has to offer. Since moving to Monmouth three years ago, I have observed some opportunities for improvements for pedestrian safety. I recently attended the City of Monmouth's Transportation Open House, and I really appreciate you all doing that. And I was encouraged to share my concerns with you all of the City Council. So here are just a couple of my thoughts and recommendations. First of all, many drivers do not observe the posted speed limit of 20 miles an hour on Clay Street. I would like to request more enforcement of speed limits on this street. I do appreciate that there is a speed scan that was recently placed on both sides of the street, but I feel a more permanent solution is warranted. There is only one stop sign between Highway 99 and Monmouth Street, and that is at Monmouth Street. And that's a six-block length. And then there's another stop sign on Whitman Road, which is two blocks from Monmouth. I would like to request that stop signs be put at least every two blocks to help with the speeding. And that's really all I have to say. But I do appreciate the opportunity that you all allow the community as citizens of Monmouth. I do walk a lot. I walk with my two young grandchildren, and I want to keep them safe. And I would really like to see Monmouth be known as a safe place for walkers of all ages.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Could I just ask you a quick question? Are there sidewalks on Cherry to the west of Whitman? There are not. Okay. Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, no, there are no sidewalks from Whitman to the end of Clay Street.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. And just so happens, we have a border commission that deals with those kinds of things. And I'm sure we will be referring that on to the commission, which will be discussed later tonight. So thank you for bringing that forward. Any other public comments submitted, Phyllis?
There were not, Mayor Coons.
Great. So that takes us this evening right to our business agenda. And our first item up, Sergeant Strack, if you want to come up and... Did you practice with the mic? Are you getting the new system here? Okay, red means on, not off. There you go.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I am Sergeant Mike Strack, and what I have for you today is the annual liquor license renewal for 2024. I've reviewed all police reports related to all the businesses that were listed above for the year of 2023. And upon conducting the review, the majority of the establishments are good to go. We don't have a lot of calls for service on those places. The one that I do bring up, which seems to be a recurring thing, is Jack's Pub. And we responded to several incidents there. There are reports of fights, disturbances, trespasses, and DUIs. There's approximately four trespass calls for service and three DUIs identified coming from that establishment. Four trespass calls for service and three DUIs generally are reported by the establishment themselves. So they are trying to police themselves and not be a burden on the police department. But as far as violations in regards to the sale of alcohol or violations of OLCC rules and regulations, there were none. Do you have any questions?
Counselor Carey?
Talking about the DUIs. And you indicated that the establishment has not been implicated in, you know, the consumption. How does that, you know, how does that get reported? How does that get to you guys? How does a DUI work in that kind of a situation? And I'm curious, only because is there a supervision issue that need to ramp up? Or is it just happenstance?
So as far as DUIs go, it's a matter of if officers are watching if there's a large crowd and watching people take off from the establishment, and then we conduct a traffic stop and find that they are impaired and shouldn't be driving. Or we just find them out and about, and through our investigative process, we learn that they came from that establishment. Anytime we learn that they come from a certain establishment that sells alcohol, we log that in our liquor log, and then those reports get sent to OLCC. And because this has been kind of a reoccurring thing, what I did do this time around is I reached out to OLCC and made sure that all reports related, whether they're violations or not through OLCC, that they had got those reports from us, just so that they're aware. And I also requested that they might come in with... Sometimes they do stings on these places and stuff like that, and I just requested that they do that, just because the number of calls that we get, and we don't get them from other places.
Thank you for doing that work. It's protecting our residents, and we certainly appreciate that. How does, what other kinds of OLCC evaluations are you guys in? Violations are you guys involved with? Or is it just the OLCC conducting their stings or their ramp-up enforcement?
So normally what we do is, and it's very difficult a lot of the times, but if we respond to the location and we can tell that someone has been over-served, what we can do is we can try to establish if we can verify which server over-served them. And if we issue a citation for that, that goes directly to OLCC, and then they can look at either sanctioning the establishment or finding them or something along those sorts. The stings, usually they only do those when they're requested. And so that's why I decided it would be a good idea for us to actually request that. Whether they do that or not, I don't know. But I know at least we're trying to make sure that we're requesting those things.
Thank you. Appreciate your work.
Yep.
And that was my other question. Should the OLCC follow up? We wouldn't necessarily know. Is that correct?
No, if they do a sting, they usually will let us know when they're doing that. But that's not always the case.
Right.
But yeah, generally speaking, we'll find out if they usually find them.
Right.
But yeah, it's kind of what they want to do.
And a reminder that, as usual, what we've learned in the past about these is even if we did make a recommendation to non-renew, the OLCC does not necessarily take that into account. So the work is better handled by our police department in conjunction with them. Any other questions? Counselor McKeel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't remember. Was Jack's Pub, did that show up on last year's report as well?
Absolutely, yes.
So now at least it's two years in a row that we have had this. And there's nothing we can do to say to the OLCC that we can, or that...
We can. The OLCC process does not necessarily take our recommendation into consideration for action against an establishment. All right. Yes, Counselor Oberst?
So I sometimes wonder if we have clientele issues at Jack's that, you know, I've observed over the years that different groups of people show up at different establishments. And is this record of fights and stuff, do you see that as related to their clientele? That it's a group that's more liable to, you know, puff out their chest and wind up in a fight? Or is this a case of consistent, if not over-serving, serving right up to the edge in people?
I would say that it's, it could be considered clientele-driven, for sure. But the thing with Jack's, I think, is one of the big problems is it's a small establishment and can get very busy. So it's really hard to wrangle people, especially when they're drinking, when you have more people than staff and/or more people than that building can contain, because you've got inside people and you've got a crowd outside. And before, when we had the pub and stuff, I think it was very similar to that. The pub got more of the clientele than everyone else, so it was more focus-driven there. Now the pub's no longer, now Jack's is the main spot. But I mean, you look at rookies, and the clientele's very different over there, and we don't have the issues over there, so.
Counselor McKeel?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I'm actually concerned about continuing to pass Jack's Pub without any comment on our part, particularly with the three DUIs. What I would hate to happen is one of these DUIs is going to hit somebody and kill someone. And we have never, as a city, told the OLCC that this establishment needs to lose its license. So I don't know. Is there something that we can make a statement on that, or?
Yeah, if you look at the alternatives in our staff report, it does mention on number two that we could recommend in favor of approving certain listed establishments and against approving certain listed establishment renewal. We would have to attach a letter explaining the reason for an unfavorable recommendation. Not sure. I think staff would prepare that for us based on this commentary, is my understanding, probably how that would work. If that motion was made and passed by the council. Counselor Belz?
It would feel unfair to the owner or the individuals that work there at Jack's. And I've been in there, and I've actually been in there when there was an incident in there, and it is very small. And we, in fact, the group I was with, we called for services because it appeared someone was, shouldn't be in there. In any case, I'm just concerned about sort of passing judgment. I agree with Counselor McKeel. I would hate for us to have said nothing. But it seems our only options are recommend the entire list, recommend the entire list with the exclusion of Jack's. So I don't have an answer, but I'm just very concerned about saying, well, yeah, let's just not recommend they get their license back. I mean, in OLCC, you could decide anything after that, but... So I'm conflicted on this.
Counselor Oberst?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I've seen in the past is that OLCC looks at these recommendations. We have, as councils, I say we, I mean, the Monmouth City Council, consented recommendations against establishments before, and it has done nothing. In part because while our sense of what's too much is here, OLCC's sense of what's too much is here. And they looked at our complaints, and they said, pfft, piddle. And I think we would probably actually be, have a greater impact rather than sending a recommendation that gets ignored pretty well by everybody. Rather than do that, ask our police department to continue to work with OLCC, to continue working with the proprietors at Jack's and say, okay, council said okay, but there's some real concerns about this. And get the message out that Jack's needs to tighten up their act a little bit, as much as they can, given things that are outside their control, who shows up, et cetera, you know? And I think that asking our police department to, I won't say focus on this one location, but certainly to let them know that, and let OLCC know that we have concerns. And I think we'd actually be better heard that way in passing a resolution that they proceed to just say, oh, there goes Monmouth again, and toss aside.
Counselor Carey?
You know, I'm largely in concurrence with Counselor Oberst. I think that before we were to, you know, recommend, and by the way, the OLCC has got to consider, I mean, they've got due process issues that they've got to deal with. And, you know, we've got four members of the Monmouth City Council that don't like what Jack's Pub is doing. It's not enough to weigh, and to tip the scales into getting into property rights, as it were, and for a business establishment. I think our police do a good job with that, but the reports are the same every year. And it is a clientele issue, and you can't always pick your friends. And, you know, so especially when you're drinking, at least that's been my experience. But, you know, so, you know, I think we need to find every way we can that we would appreciate a little attention to them. The report tonight and the report last week indicated that they've been cooperative and that often they initiate the police action, crying for help as well. So, you know, I share all the concerns that we all have. But to move this forward and further frame the conversation, if need be, I'm going to move to send, and then you, OLCC, a recommendation to renew all of the liquor licenses listed in this report.
And I would second that.
And I do have a question.
Okay, just let me, thank you for the motion, Counselor Carey, and the second, Counselor Oberst, and for their discussion, Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm curious, I'm assuming that you've had some of these conversations already with pub, with Jack's Pub, about what's happening and about the reports. And I'm wondering if there's any sort of probation period or, I guess, assistance for them to just create a better environment, maybe there's some resources? I don't know, because I'm assuming that you've had these conversations and these reports and things like that. But is there some sort of probation type of period or some sort of improvement or resources that can be provided to them?
So we don't have like a probation period, but I can tell you that through conversations with the pub and the staff, we have noticed, and I don't know if it's a regular thing, because I'm not working nights right now, so I'm not having regular contact with them. But I do know that they have, on busy nights, started to have security on-site. So I think they do recognize that there is some room for improvement, we'll put it that way. And, you know, I don't know if they're ever planning on doing that all the time, but they have, on some of the busier nights, done that.
Counselor McKeel?
Again, I would just note that DUIs can end in a death on the street. And I think, Counselor Carey, I respectfully, this is a question. We can choose our friends, because I'm pretty sure at that establishment is a sign that says the management reserves the right to not serve individuals. And they can decide not to have people who come in who habitually fight or leave with too much alcohol. And I'm glad to hear that they're hiring security, but I think they could also hire additional staff if they're finding that they're not tracking how many people they're over-serving in alcohol. So I think we don't want to have this conversation after somebody is dead.
All right. All in favor of the motion to renew all of the licenses, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, thank you. Phyllis, you count the same as I did? All right. Then we shall move on. Thank you, Sergeant Strack, for your work and your report.
I do want to thank you, Officer, for your work. So thank you very much for that.
Our next item on our business agenda is a potential new intergovernmental agreement with some other partners, and Suzanne Dufner from our Community and Economic Development Department.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable members of the City Council. Here tonight to present the staff report for a request to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Independence. This is for cooperative building services. So right now, each city relies on a really small department. We have one building official and then one inspector. That's not quite full-time, so... And likewise, the City of Independence has a very small building staff. And this agreement would allow our two cities to provide some backup coverage. So in the event that our building official wants to take a vacation or might get sick, we don't have to completely shut down our building program and can get some cooperative backup from the City of Independence. Likewise, we'd be able to provide those backup services if we were able to, if we're available for that. So the organ revised statutes do allow cities to enter into these cooperative agreements. We have other ones for things like fire, backup police services, homelessness, cooperation on homelessness issues. But yeah, just want to be specific. We don't have an existing one right now with Independence. So bringing that to you to see if everything checks out. We do believe this will help minimize disruptions to our building service department and provide a better customer service experience. There are no proposed exchange of fee for service for things. We figure this is, you know, this is mutually cooperative. We have the ability to evaluate that if it becomes lopsided in the future, and we will track that. But yeah, it really just gives us a deeper bench to be able to provide those building services. The agreement before you has been reviewed by both cities, by both city attorneys. We've had some back and forth and some redlining, so this is the agreement that has everybody's comments in that. And we are just asking you to provide some direction for staff to enter into that agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the agreement.
Counselor Oberst?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Suzanne, when Larry Thornton was our building official, he got certified in electrical inspections. First time I ever used Monmouth for building services, I got a Polk County electrical inspector, because we didn't do electrical inspections. When I have used Independence's department that houses the properties I own there, I get a Polk County building, electrical inspector. So I was upstairs last week, and I spoke to the building inspector, and I said, do you do electrical? And he said, working on it. So we're going to have an official who is qualified to do things that Independence is not, as far as I can tell. And are we going to be called upon to start doing all of Independence's electrical inspections?
Yeah, I mean, they still have their agreement, the City of Independence, my understanding, with Polk County to provide that as their primary, you know, electrical services. So it's my understanding that that would become like a routine for all of their electrical inspections. That would be that lopsided agreement that we're...
I'm imagining a situation in which Polk County is up to their eyeballs in electrical inspections. Independence really wants to get an electrical inspection done, and so they take this agreement and call on us to do the electrical inspection for them. What do you all think? Is that a realistic concern? Do we need to have language that precludes us doing electrical inspections in our neighboring community? Just asking.
Yeah. And so there has been some cooperation right now, because our building official actually used to work for the City of Independence. And so in some ways, they are kind of helping each other out as we were working towards getting this agreement. But that hasn't been an issue so far with the two building officials that we have now. And I have not heard that concern raised by our building official. So, you know, I want to believe that that's, wouldn't become the case. And something, though, that's going to be brought to our attention so that we can monitor that. And if it does become a problem, then we have the ability to come back and make changes and corrections to that, so.
I would also note, the scope of the statement of work does not specify electrical at all, anyway. It is a statement of work regarding site-built plumbing, structural, mechanical, and manufactured home setup. So right now, that's not even...
Yeah, that's a good point. And I think it was in there. Thank you for reminding that, Madam Mayor. And we took it out because if Independence doesn't have that backup service to provide to us, so, yeah.
I caught the line that says, Monmouth and Independence employ inspectors with particular training, ability, knowledge, and experience to meet the needs of the other jurisdictions. And that was what raised the alarm for me, was that we may have training that they don't have that would meet their needs.
Yeah.
They couldn't turn around and meet ours.
Sure.
Did you, Counselor Carey?
Yeah. One question, and then a comment. Would there be any additional training required because of the peculiarities of building codes in one city or the other? Are there any, I mean, we have different, I'm sure, different codes somewhat than what they do. Would we need to be trained up and expect them to be trained up on, I'm not even sure what that would be. But that's one of the things that jumped out.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're right, that the cities do have different zoning ordinances, for example, and different property maintenance and code enforcement. So this agreement does not cover those services. But as far as building codes go, it's a statewide code, so it should be the same for all cities, yeah.
The one thing that I thought would have been to address and be able to artfully address some of the concerns that Counselor Oberst brought up. It might be wise to add a annual automatic review. You know, so, okay, each, at the end of the fiscal year, every year, both sides will evaluate this to see what's a good idea. The only thing that would do is it would, if we're getting a little tired of going over there all the time with them, us, it might be a little uncomfortable to say, hey, knock it off, Monmouth, you know? So that could just be part of the regular deal. And I mean, it's not a deal killer for me, I'm a guest on this, but, you know, it might be a way to make it a little bit better.
Kristy?
I just wanted to point out that Section 9 of the IGA does spell out a termination clause, and that gives either party a 30-day notice provision. So we do have the opportunity to cancel the agreement with a 30-day notice.
Sure, you could cancel it, but it would still be that uncomfortable deal. I mean, it's fine, but, you know, sometimes if you build something in, it's easily done. And I do think that if this passes, we need to sort of note this, and Sabre, you could note this as you can. This is a way to remove pinch points for development in both communities. And so this is an opportunity for government, really, to expedite the development. And I don't mean we're fast-tracking it, it's just so we don't have to wait for somebody to come back from vacation.
It's a great point, and it's something I've been proud of, our new building official. He has, as he's working with new, establishing relationships with new builders, being able to educate them about this. And when they hear about that, they're very excited and happy to have that, because they did not have that before. So there were gaps in our service, so that's a good point. And I'm happy to check and see if the City of Independence is okay with adding, because they've reviewed this agreement language, and they were okay with it. But if we add new language, we'd have to go back through that process. But, I mean, you certainly can do it in practice. I'm just wondering, yeah, will they be okay with putting that in language? Okay, yeah, that's good.
A motion is available in your staff report.
I move to direct staff to enter into the internet grant for mental agreement for building inspection services with the City of Independence.
I would second that.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel, for the motion, and Counselor Oberst for the second. Not seeing any additional questions. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passed. Yep, thank you. And speaking of the Transportation Commission, or Traffic Safety Commission, Police Chief Isaiah Haynes to talk about a proposed change to that commission's charter. Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I have a recommendation to, I guess, propose to conduct the first reading of ordinance 1412, which would repeal Monmouth City Code Sections 2.70.010 through 2.70.100, relating to the Monmouth Traffic Safety Committee and adopting new provisions establishing the Monmouth Transportation Commission. And really, I guess, what I would highlight here is the, kind of the meat potatoes of this, is that our current ordinance speaks very, I guess, explicitly to traffic safety-related matters. The new proposed ordinance 1412 would really keep that foundation and the same thing still intact, but add some good things that would promote transportation programs for all modes of transportation and speaking specifically to public rights of way, including streets, sidewalks, and bike lanes. So, it really just expands kind of the role of the commission there. And furthermore, there would be some changes to membership that are kind of highlighted here. The members, the membership would remain the same with five members. Currently, there's a member that's from the Police Department and from the Public Works Department that are part of the membership. This new ordinance would remove them as members. There would still be staff assigned by the city manager that would be staff support for those, but they would no longer be, I guess, voting members. But that would align with the other boards and commissions, what that is. So, I think that's probably the highlights. There is a proposed motion down below, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there's any.
Thanks. We don't actually move on this. This would just be a first reading. But questions at this point will help us decide if there is any interesting changes before we move to the next meeting where we would adopt. Counselor, Chief?
As we're... Excuse me, as we're considering membership for the commission, I'm wondering if we want to consider having members of Independence Community on the commission. The senior center did that with their board, and it actually helped the functioning of the senior center, plus made a very strong board. And since transportation between Monmouth and Independence is... Well, you don't know where the line is. We do, but anyway. It might be good to consider that as you are writing in who can be members of the commission.
Okay, and there is, I will say that there is one, I should have probably pointed this out. There is one spot that is, would allow for a non-resident, I think. I have to look at the direct verbiage here.
And that's pretty much true of all our boards and commissions. There's one slot that may be filled by someone from outside the city limits if council approves. So, that would give us, you know, one out of five.
I apologize for my ignorance.
No, that's my fault, and I would thank you, Counselor Oberst. And I'd be remiss to say that Counselor Oberst had his hand in crafting this and did a wonderful job. And he brought this to, and this was discussed at our current Traffic Safety Committee, and a lot of these things were ironed out. But thank you, Counselor Oberst, for the hard work doing this, so.
You can blame the mayor. She started it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All I said is, "I'm not going to do the work. You do it." That's all I did. Just delegation. All right, other questions? And I'm going to ask a question of Phyllis. Typically, when we are repealing sections of city code, don't we also repeal the prior ordinance? The last ordinance that establish? That's what I seem to recall, repealing ordinance number such and such, whatever the... And I don't have that in my... I mean, I do. It's ordinance 1296. I just would maybe change what I say as a first reading to include repealing that ordinance? It wouldn't hurt, and then we can check with the city attorney. All right, I'll do that, and potentially, Justin, thank you.
We are checking on that. I think it looks like it does have the current city ordinance listed in the staff report, so it shouldn't... I don't see any downside to adding that to the text of the title here.
All right, thank you. Then I would like to conduct this first reading of ordinance number 1412, an ordinance repealing Monmouth City Code Sections 2.70.010 through 2.70.100, and ordinance... Had it there? Ordinance 1292, relating to the Monmouth Transportation Safety Committee and adopting new provisions establishing the Monmouth Traffic Commission. All right, and that will come back to us. Thank you. So, in our opportunity to have just about all of our department heads visit us tonight, Counselor Oberst?
I just want to say thanks to Chief and to Russ for, you know, going through this process with me. And they had a vote, and now they don't, and that's not an easy thing to do. And I appreciate both of you all for the hard work on this project. Thanks.
And with that, Susie Marston, our Finance Director, to give us an update on our ARPA spending, American Rescue Plan Act.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow councillor, council members. Tonight, I am here to give you an update on our ARPA spending and also to present a proposed revised spending plan based on where we're currently at. In January 2022, the City Council approved an ARPA spending plan based on a projection that the city would receive $2.35 million. Staff looked at the current spending and saw areas where there was significant cost savings. Some projects just didn't come to fruition. And so, we basically took those savings and revamped it into a proposed revised spending plan, which you'll see on the bottom half of the report that I provided as an attachment. So, basically, we revised some amounts, keeping some spending categories the same. And stop me if you have questions, please. Towards the bottom, the city's made some purchases. We've purchased some AED units for citywide use. They'll be placed in all the facilities, and we'll be trained on them. $50,000 was committed towards the audiovisual install for this room, based on some savings that we had from hiring a grant manager to manage the FEMA and federal grants. We have spent some funds on tourism event support. I think that was part of the holiday lining. And Polk IT has recommended that we update our door security at our police department, which is $12,000. We had, well, the police vehicles, we had two on order. One was on order last year. It was very much delayed. We received it. So, we're going to end up receiving essentially what we have, two vehicles this year. And there's a little bit of a budget shortfall for both of those vehicles, so we've got $40,000 going to cover that. And then, the biggest piece is what I reported to you last month. We anticipate needing to use $450,000 of ARPA funds to cover the overage of the City Hall project, which is included in this plan. And then, we've also added an extra line, other uses to be determined. And that would be, for lack of better words, a line to balance us if there's something, you know, if we need more, less, whatever. So, anyway, what we're asking you tonight is to consider this revised spending plan. The City Hall project costs, we're getting close enough to the end of the project where we feel very comfortable that the $450,000 will cover what we need to complete the project. It's based on forecasted costs moving forward, which we anticipate being done by the end of March. Let's see, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, I just want you to know that we're very comfortable with that number and think the $450,000 would be sufficient. So, with that, I would welcome any questions you might have.
Go ahead, Counselor Carey. Counselor Selena Soliveros?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I'm curious about the cybersecurity and wondering if that also covers insurance in case we are under, you know, we do, like, what happened to the school district? Or is that part of the general funding?
Yeah, so the city increased their coverage quite substantially on cybersecurity coverage last year, I know. And part of those funds, these funds here in the report, they were used to upgrade our firewall as well.
Can't really use it for ongoing operating funding, because it's going to go away, but one-time things like that. Yep, go ahead, Counselor.
One of the things that, you know, we've got for the Resource Navigation Center, we're spending about $25,000 on that, I think, in both of those scenarios. Is that enough? I thought we had committed to $100,000 a year for two years. I may not have that right, but it seems to me that we had a larger commitment to, you know, to get that off the ground. So, I guess I'm wondering whether or not I'm all wet, and if I am fine, and if I'm not, then do we have enough?
You're remembering correctly, but that's in a different line item. So, the $25,000 for the Resource Navigation was used to help with the site setup of Polk Resource Navigation Center. If you look at the very top line, the Community and Human Services response at 230 in our revised plan, the city entered into an agreement with Polk County to use $200,000 of the ARPA funds to help folks with rental assistance and that kind of a thing. So, that $200,000 includes, or $230,000 includes the $200,000 that we agreed to help or use the funds for.
Okay, good. That's... I wanted to make sure it was there and it was covered, because I didn't want to lose that. But I wanted to make sure we had enough. You know, members of the council, I had a conversation with Susie this afternoon on this, and she was very thorough and right on in terms of the things that she was talking about. One of the things that she's going to be doing is to detail how we have gotten, or how we have paid for the, you know, the significant overage in the cost. Remember, it started out at $9 million, and then for situations beyond our control, it's not $10.6. And so, the $450,000 is going to eat away at that. And while she has confidence that that $1.1 million is accounted for, she's going to be developing a more detailed presentation for March. And so, my concern is, and as I told her, it might be that we will need more than $450,000 out of this. And so, if that's the case, we lock this budget in now, then it might be difficult for us to go back. The date that we report to the federal government on this is April 30th of '24. So, we've got some time. If we would be more comfortable delaying this, a meeting or two, and give her a chance to firm up those, you know, the accounting for that $1.1 million, or whether we charge ahead. That's kind of a rhetorical question, I guess. You know, and I want to make, I mean, are we better off now, or would we be just as well off in, you know, the first of April?
Susie or Kristi?
Yeah, the other option that the council could consider is, you know, I think it's highly unlikely, but if we need more than $450,000, another option that the council could consider is to, you know, include in your motion to use whatever we need out of the business marketing and resiliency line item. That's money tagged to support businesses in their recovery efforts and that sort of a thing. But that's really the only other line item we have available to pick up any extra.
Other than, for example, if we took the $40,000 for the police vehicle, we'd still be spending the $40,000 out of the general fund.
Yeah.
Right? Or same thing. This also includes the $50,000 for this AV install, so that part has already been budgeted. And so, it really works out to $500 to support City Hall. Forty-five, so. Other thoughts about that or questions for Susie?
And just as a reminder, these funds, we have about $1.2 left to spend. They need to be obligated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026, with an annual reporting requirement, as Counselor Carey explained, at April 30th.
Okay, Counselor Oberst?
So, I believe this is all just information for us, and we're not really taking action on anything. So, if we say to you...
There is a motion.
Is there? Because I was going to suggest, we could approve this as it is, motion or not, approve this as it is. And if it looks like, as you said, hopefully, we'll have everything down to the penny by the end of March. You don't have to report till the end of April. You can come back to us at a meeting in March and say, "We need another however much to finish covering the City Hall. Here's where I propose it comes from." And we could move forward tonight and still have plenty of wiggle room, should there be a need to wiggle some.
Again, we have until the end of September to obligate these.
No, right, I understand that. If we're talking about a report to the feds by the end of April, we'll have plenty of time to know about the City Hall situation by that time.
Counselor Selena Soliveros?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of ARPA funds as revised.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Selena Soliveros for the motion, and Counselor McKeel for the second. Any last thoughts or questions about that? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Susie, for that work. That concludes our business agenda this evening for the councils. So, we've got our reporting, and then note, we also will be yielding the dais to the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency at the conclusion of this meeting. But in the meantime, as far as the mayor report go, I just want to thank again our staff, department heads particularly, for all the work that was put in prior to our goal-setting retreat on Saturday. Once again, I think a really successful opportunity to sit down and connect on what's been accomplished and what we'd like to see accomplished over the coming years. It's always fun having the facilitator say that, like, we're one of their favorite places to visit, and... And part of that is because we are all on the same page moving the work forward. And so they, they recognize that. And I really thank everyone for their participation in that. And thanks Sabre and Phyllis and Kevin for all the snacks and the comfy room setup. So that's about all I have. As previously mentioned, my day job has been a little busy lately, so haven't been doing a lot of extra stuff. But that does bring us to reports of boards and commissions. Anybody have a good report for us tonight?
I'll just say quickly, we did not have a quorum for our arts and culture commissions, so nothing to report.
We did have one at the tree board, and we're, we're going to have a tree planting on April 27th, which is a Saturday. We have opened the, the contest for people who have no front yard trees to put in a request for a tree. And if we get more than 10, we'll be drawing from a hat. And Sabre, last I heard from you, we have one already. So nine more people out there with no front yard trees, get your name in, and we will have a tree planting later.
And Councilor Belt?
So I attended the League of Oregon Cities Women's Caucus meeting this afternoon. And one, one item was brought up towards the end of the meeting, and I wanted to alert you, I've already had a discussion with the interim city manager about this. At a recent Cannon Beach City Council meeting, February 6th, during the public comment period, a remote speaker, someone on Zoom, used that form to spread anti-Semitic and racial slurs promoting white supremacy. Because of this, several councils now are evaluating what is, what are their rules, what decorum dictates to address First Amendment rights, as well as when incidents like this happen. I've brought this up to the interim city manager, just asking that we work with legal counsel and then perhaps have a work session to discuss what we need to do, what changes we might need to make in the event that this does happen. And it's happened at several other council meetings now. So just wanted to let you know that's being discussed.
Well, thank you very much. Councilor McKeel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a library report. We did meet on February 14th. I have a save the date. The spring book sale will be the first Saturday in May on the 4th and will be in conjunction with the garden club sale. So get a book, buy a plant, get a tree for your front yard. Never mind, don't do the tree. This summer reading is already being set up, so there'll be lots of fun activities coming up, so watch the local library for that. If you're trying to find the paperbacks in the library, they have moved. And so if you're having trouble, the staff will be able to help you with that. If you are interested, there is Blind Date with a Book. Yes. And so it's cheaper than taking somebody out for a pizza. You just have to pick up a wrapped up book off the shelf, and then you get to rate the book. And you don't have to pay to do that. We also have a, check out the library for the Black History Month book display that's there. And this Saturday, they had an event last week, Monday or Tuesday? Well, they had a, they had a book author. And this Saturday, they're going to have the Oregon Black Pioneers, which is quite a coup for the library to get somebody from that organization. It'll be this Saturday in the library at 2:00. Also, some bragging rights. I'm sure everybody here has probably picked up a free seed pack or two. We have, since it started in 2015, given away 25,052 seed packets. That's a lot of tomatoes. So with the popularity, they're now limiting this to just two packs a day. So you can still have lots of tomatoes. Just kind of a report for CCRLS. They're an amazing organization. They're going to begin a six-month pilot for Saturday delivery of their courier service. You do not have to wait for those books that you are borrowing from another library. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Nope. All right, that takes us to council comments or announcements. Anything, anybody has to observe about upcoming event? Oh, no, yeah, I guess I'll let Christie go. Never mind. Christie Worster, city manager, I read her stuff all the time, I guess. It's nice to hear from you. Hello.
You may want to hear this little tidbit, that we've had over 200 views to the posting for the city manager recruitment. And I spoke with Scott Dadson today, and we already have five applicants for the position. So we are generating interest in the city manager job here. Also, I'd like to invite Chief Haynes up to the table, if he would. I know there was notification that went out on the city's Facebook page about enhanced police presence in our community today. And I asked the chief if he could just give a few comments to the council, because I know you probably all have questions about that.
Yeah, there's, thank you. There's probably not a whole lot of details I can give, other than there was, there was one individual in town today. And we received information that at a certain point that he was in Monmouth, and he was located by Polk County deputies. And they made the choice, and the wise choice, to include Salem there because there were some dangerous circumstances. And so they used the SWAT team to come out and, and use their tactics and, and time and just the resources they have. And so there was a good ending to that and the fact that they arrested the individual and safely, and there was no, I guess, collateral damage, you know, so to speak. So it was a good ending, but just a way of update that that situation has been resolved.
And thank you for communication on that, and Sabre for helping out. That was certainly helpful for folks to get alerts, and particularly for the school district transportation department to know and make arrangements to not try to drop students off in that area after school and be informed. The district was able to keep students safe at the schools and contact families. So great coordination and communication that really helped, I think, let folks know what was going on. Thank you.
Is that it? I mean, you could go on.
My report, really?
All right, announcements or comments? Councilor McKeel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back to Black History Month presentation, there will be one this coming Thursday, just a couple days, at 6:30 PM at the Senior Center. So we'll have a really fun conversation there from a talk given by Dr. Lolita Amerisha from Portland State University. So we're going to have a video, and then we'll have a really good conversation. And we'll have really tasty cookies and a drawing for free gifts. So you'll have to be there. It's a good place to be. I also want to point out that the Ash Creek Elementary, Monmouth Elementary Independent, it's elementary, teachers had their kids do artwork. They, they teach, the teachers read a story by a black author, and the kids do some artwork. And we have businesses up and down Main Street and in Independence with that artwork displayed. So it's a, it's a fun month to see kids work.
Thank you. Councilor Carey?
Couldn't get a question in to our city manager, but I wonder, because it was a little confusing in the minutes, and I've talked with Phyllis about this, but do we have an idea, a little more clarity in terms of what, when the file review, you know, what the step down in terms of, you know, the large, you know, so we can get our candidates interviewed? There was some talk at the 11th that the, the file review had began perhaps on the 15th, then on the 19th possibly. And, you know, I don't know, I'm just, I feel better because, you know, I mean, I've got vacations coming and that kind of thing, so I'm kind of looking to get a, to the degree that you can, get an out schedule.
Yes, I know that Scott Dadson from the Midwolamette Valley Council of Government is planning to put together a schedule. And I know Mayor Coons had also mentioned that she might propose a schedule, and that will be coming to the council. The plan is to do our initial review of the applicants following the council meeting, the second meeting in March, I think, which is March 19th. But if there is a large number of applicants, I suspect that the council will want to not only review the applicants that are being recommended for an interview, but potentially all of the candidates. I've seen that in other cases. And so if there is a large number of applications that come in, we may propose a different meeting night. And so we'll be putting that together, and we should probably bring that forward at our next meeting so that everybody's all together and knows what those dates would potentially be.
Thank you.
Yep. And hard, hard to schedule extra meetings during budget season, but that, that is a possibility for us. I do have one announcement. The Monmouth Independent Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the annual State of the Cities address. That will be held on Wednesday, February 28th, so a week from tomorrow at 8:30 AM, right here in this room. So we will be, Mayor McArdle and myself will be able to sort of report on where we are and what's going on in the cities. And last year, that was hosted at Independent Civic Center. And so they kindly delayed the State of the Cities this year, and so we were able to host it here this year, so. That's, yes, that's right. Yes, Councilor Oberst?
Two quick things. Back in November, Independence Council Mayor Morton and Don Patton, former Minnetonka manager, put together Monmouth Independent Story Night One, as it turns out, and invited some local storytellers to come and tell stories. And it was just a nice night. We had a good time. Sabre came and read just a hilarious story. That was, that was quite fun that she was reading for somebody else. At any rate, we will be having Monmouth Independent Story Night Two on Friday, March 8th at 7:00 PM at The Brew in downtown Independence. And I spoke with Councilor Morton today, and they've already, they've got seven slots, six of which are filled. So people are, and four of them are near storytellers. So this has the potential to lead to Monmouth Independent Story Night Three and beyond. So if you're interested, come on down, and it's, it's a good time. You'll hear some good stories. And then on, I want to remind everyone, April 19th is the Salem Health West Valley Foundation fundraiser for scholarships for healthcare education. And that will be at the Independence Hotel. It's called All In, and it's fake gambling. You get, you, your admission buys you, among other things, $75 worth of funny money that you get to spend playing real Las Vegas games like Roulette and Blackjack and so on. And the proceeds go to education for hospital employees, their families, and students from our local high schools. So again, that's on April 19th. Should be able to find that with a search online. And if you can't, let me know with my, through my city email, and I'll get you the information you need. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, we've all got those noted. At this time then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn so we can, yep. Sure.
Thank you, Ari. The land acknowledgement, we would like to acknowledge that indigenous tribes and bands have been on the lands here and throughout Oregon since time immemorial. It is not lost on us that Willamette Treaty forcibly removed these peoples from their homelands in 1855 to 1856, the year that the city of Monmouth was founded. We recognize the pre-existing and continued sovereignty of the federally recognized tribes that are a vibrant part of this region today, the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians, and thank them for sharing their perspective on how we might care for one another and the land, and so it can take care of us. We commit to engaging in a respectful and successful partnership as stewards of these lands. Thank you.
A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everyone. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And hearing none opposed, the Monmouth City Council is adjourned. And I think, can we just run right into the Urban Renewal Agency? Nobody needs a quick break. Okay, over there. Then I would like to call to order the Tuesday, February 20th meeting of the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency and ask Phyllis Bowman for the roll call, please.
Ms. Beltz? Here. Mr. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Lopez is excused. Ms. McKeel? Here. Mr. Oberst? Ms. Selena Soliveros?
Here.
Ms. Coons?
I am present. And we would also accept public comments at this time. I don't have any for the Urban Renewal Agency, Phyllis, for any submitted for consideration.
There were none, Mayor Coons, or Chairman Coons.
Thank you very much. We do have a consent calendar, of course. The last time the Urban Renewal Agency met was very recently, January 23rd of 2024. Those minutes were included in the packet, and I would entertain a motion to either change, amend, or add to, or approve as is.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carey, for the motion, and Mr. Oberst for the second. Any, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, that moves us to our business agenda. We have one item this evening, and that actually comes from Susie Marston. So more talk about funding. An update on a topic we've discussed about potentially borrowing money to undertake some of those urban renewal projects.
Thank you, Chair Coons and members of the Urban Renewal Board. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the borrowing that we've been discussing up till this point. We planned to borrow up to $5 million this fiscal year towards capital improvement projects coming up. However, staff took another look at the financials for the Urban Renewal District and in a nutshell determined that we should probably hold off on borrowing any money for at least a year. And this is due to a few things. So we projected out to the end of this fiscal year, and the Urban Renewal District, or Agency will, we project will end with a fund balance of $60,000. And then looking forward to the 2020, 2024, 25 year, we project that the agency will receive $820,000 in tax increment funding, TIF money. So that money is used to pay debt service of the city, and it's also used to cover costs like community development, staff support, facade grant improvements, and other business support that isn't otherwise eligible with bank loan proceeds. So considering that, our current debt service payment is $325,000. We did pay off the inter-fund loan to Power and Light. That was the loan that happened for the Main Street Park Amphitheater. So that was paid off to use and help go towards any new debt payment. But as we worked with our municipal advisors, they did an analysis for us and determined that new debt service payment would be anywhere from 400 to 450,000 dollars. So tacking that on to our current $325,000 payment, that would leave us pretty much nothing to use for the business support that we like to do within our Urban Renewal District. So all of that in mind, we are recommending not moving- So all of that in mind, we are recommending not moving forward with borrowing, holding off for a year. We took another look at our projects. Those are also on a delay, so it doesn't make sense to sit on money and pay interest on it while we're waiting for projects to take off. And also, waiting a year will give the bank market a chance to improve, because right now, it's not very competitive and banks aren't looking to lend anything longer than 10 to 15 years. So waiting, it'll allow a chance, you know, for banks to offer longer terms. Interest rates will likely be lower. And then also, we've got some growth happening in our Urban Renewal District. So at the same time, we could be building up our TIF money. So that would be our recommendation going forward. Not really asking for any motion from the board, just wanted to come to you with this information and answer questions if you have any.
You know, I, I guess I would, I'm supportive of this. However, I want to make sure that we don't lose track of the projects that we've got lined up, that we've, that we've identified as important. Having said that, it'll allow us now, if we do take a one-year pause, to go back and retool some of those numbers. And, and it might be if, if, you know, we could plan to the point where we're actually going to be able to implement a project that we have budgeted for. I think there's one in here that we're just not going to get to this year, understandably, that happens. But we can update that and be a little more fine-tuned with our, with our projects, obviously our capacity, let alone, you know, let alone funding. So I think, I, you know, I don't want to lose track of those, but I think it's a good chance to sort of retool, reassess, is this really our number one priority or is it number two? You know, all of those things that you can do if you've got more time.
Yeah. Understood.
Yeah.
Yep. Go ahead, Ms. McKeel.
Thank you. I, could a side benefit of this too, in delaying our, our projects that are delayed, the cost potentially could go down on those, as costs are starting to go down, I think? So we could have a double, a win-win in savings?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that there's a few things that will work in our favor by waiting.
Yeah, I, several of, I know, school-based capital construction projects are reporting that things are coming in slightly under budget, that some of those large material costs and supply chain things are slowing down. So, yep. But interest rates, the biggie. Mr. Oberst and Mr. Carey?
I want to note that you, you latched on to the idea, if something really good comes along and we need to do some short-term funding, we can do what we did to build the amphitheater and, for example, and borrow from one of our existing enterprise funds. Interest rates there tend to be really good.
Yeah.
Very favorable. And it, it, you know, just having that piece in there made me feel a whole lot better about this, because it says, if a golden opportunity comes up, we're not stuck. We have, we have in the back of our minds what to do when, when opportunity knocks. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
You know, it, it might be, while there's no action necessary on this apparently, I would hope that, that you and Phyllis could work together on getting some good narrative into the, into the minutes, so this is memorialized. Because we initially planned to be, you know, moving forward with this. Now we're not.
Right.
And so to memorialize that, I think would be important in the written word.
Yeah, we agree with that. I mean, going through the project list, we, we understand the importance and, you know, how important it is to you as a board and the city council to keep moving forward on this plan. So we do, we have that, and that's what we also want for the city and the Urban Renewal District.
Because we do have a sunset. All right. Let me see, no other questions? Thank you, Susie. That's that. And at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Thank you, Ms. McKeel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 That sends us home for the evening. Thank you, everybody.